...for the City of Hiram City Council. I can keep it this time?
You can keep it this time.
Okay, great. Pastor McGrady, would you lead us up, please?
Let us pray. Father, now as always, we say thank you, God, for this day. We say thank you for keeping us. We say thank you, God, that you've allowed us, God, life, health, and strength. Father, we pray now and intercede for our family and our friends, our loved ones, God, as we pray for our community, as we pray for our county, as we pray for our state, as we pray for our country. God, we pray your wisdom and your knowledge, God, would lead in the midst tonight. Your people, your appointed elected officials, in Jesus' name I pray with faith believing. Amen.
Amen.
Right now, we're going to have the elementary school honorably come to do the blessing of allegiance. Everyone would be spared.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Battle, would you come up front, please? For those of you who don't know, we have a great little museum right here in town called the Rosenwald School. It's one of the few schools that are still in existence, that are still, are open for public viewing. And we've always had a good relationship, the city and the museum, and therefore, we have been making our annual donation to the Rosenwald Museum.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. And don't give it to that man over there. Picture time. Picture time.
So she's leaving.
She's leaving, so Derek or Tyrell won't get their hands on that jacket.
That's right. And tomorrow.
All right, Principal Black, come on down.
Thank you, thank you.
Hey, is that a new fashion accessory you got there?
It is, which is all my outfits.
Did you have a shoulder surgery?
I'm going to. Yes, it's coming, yes.
We need to talk.
Thank you once again, Hiram City Council, and for all our Hiram Hornets and their support here tonight. This is our final recognition for the school year, so we are super excited to recognize these Hornets. First, we would like to start with kindergarten. This student shows what it means to be a good citizen. He is friendly, helpful, and cooperative. He always does his best work and listens and follows directions. He loves school and learning. He is an amazing student and a joy to have in our room. Congratulations to Mr. Ethan Tate. Our first grade member shows what it means to be a good citizen each day. He comes in every day with a smile on his face and ready to learn. He is kind to all his classmates and treats everyone with respect, no matter the difference. This person is happy to help his teachers and peers whenever it is needed and takes pride in everything he does. Thank you, Sebastian Botera, for being a good citizen in first grade. Our second grade student demonstrates good citizenship every day at Hiram Elementary. She works extremely hard in our classroom and is always responsible and respectful. She follows our rules and procedures and is a positive example to others. We are so proud of her for always doing her best in second grade. Congratulations to Ms. Akafala Suador. This third grade student was nominated because she always strives to do her best, is kind and helpful to her classmates, and very dependable. She truly exudes what it means to be a Hiram Hornet and a good citizen. Congratulations to Ms. Emily Lorenzo. Our fourth grade student is a shining example of kindness, responsibility, and respect for others. He is always willing to lend a hand to his classmates, teachers, and anyone in need, whether it's helping a friend with their schoolwork, sharing his materials, or showing kindness to others. This student is always eager to make the classroom and school community a better place. What makes this student stand out is his selflessness. He doesn't hesitate to help others even when it means putting their needs before his own. His positive attitude and willingness to make everyone feel included and valued are just a few of the reasons why he's so deserving of this award. Congratulations to Mr. Lucas Verdel Adams. Not everybody gets that special attention. Lucas, you loved that, didn't you?
No favor to that.
Our fifth grade representative is a citizenship and is a citizen in our classroom and shows it in many ways, not only in our classroom but also in our school and school community. She treats her classmates with kindness and respect regardless of their differences. She is very mindful of rules and expectations both in the classroom and throughout the school. She takes ownership of her actions, learns from mistakes, respects, and takes care of classroom materials, and has proven very trustworthy and responsible. She accepts all assignments with an eager and positive attitude, tries her very best, contributes to classroom discussions, and has an unmatched enthusiasm for learning. Congratulations to our fifth grade citizenship winner, Ms. Kinsley Hill. We would like to thank Hiram City Council again for all your support throughout the school year, and we look forward to doing this again. We actually have a brand-new batch of Hiram Hornets at the school tonight, who will be starting kindergarten with us next year. So we're excited to go meet them, but thank you so much.
All right, turn it.
Come on, come on.
Mayor, did you want to mention anything?
They've got them, I will mention it.
Thank you, Principal Black, your chief. All the faculty have to get back over and tell our guys not to stop on the way back.
I would like to take this time, speaking of museums, hold on there, Ivy. We've got another museum here in Paulding County. Many of you probably don't know that we have our very own airport in Paulding County. At the Paulding County Airport, there's a Museum of Flight. They've got some really excellent old World War I, II fighter planes out there for exhibits, and they have so kindly given us certificates for the award recipients and their families to go out there and visit the Museum of Flight. So I would suggest that you take the opportunity, bring those kids out there, let them look around. It's a good, it's a good bit of history for them to take a look at out there. Ivy?
All right, thank you, Mayor, and City Council members for allowing me to present the awards for our eighth annual pinwheel coloring contest to Hiram Elementary School students. We appreciate your continued support. Paulding Child Advocacy Center's mission is to provide a safe and neutral setting to evaluate a child who may have been abused, encourage the collaboration of social and legal agencies for the benefit of the child, and at all times lessen the trauma suffered by the child. Before we present the awards, I want to give a big shout-out to our social workers, our school counselors, our teachers, and school administrators for collaborating with us and allowing us to have this project. It's a fun project for the kids every year. And I am here to present first, second, and third place from Hiram. We have a first, second, and third in every school, and then we have an overall for the whole district. So we are proud of all of our fourth graders that participated, and they were amazing, and the decisions were not easy. So I'm going to start off with third place is Aisha Khan in Ms. Walls or Mr. Walls' class. Sorry, it was Aisha, I mispronounced her name. The second place is Raquel Callaway in Vickers' class. And first place goes to Hope Deans in Little's class. And on the back of their medals, it says, "Take a Stand Against Child Abuse," and it was, our sponsors this year were State Court Judge Angela O'Connor and Solicitor General Luana Nolan. Thank y'all so much. Go Hornets!
We're done with the school presentations. Cliff, you want to dismiss the class?
Thank you, parents of students, have a good evening.
Tiffany is spreading out there. I do mind buying items on the paper clips. Look, item four. Look, item four, look at that, item six because item five. She can mean going to flip and throw it off. I don't know why they put the record before the proclamation.
Love you. Nicholas?
Said she made the monthly report before the process.
Dad's coming and everything.
Gee, where'd everybody go? Yeah. Exactly.
Chief Woodson, congratulations, Stepford Chalk.
Michael, I'm going to put you on hold for a second. I'm going to skip over and do the presentation of the Autism Acceptance Month Proclamation to McKenna Farms. Whereas all children hold within them the promise of a bright future, and every child deserves to grow up in an environment filled with the support, acceptance, and understanding. During Autism Acceptance Month, we reaffirm our commitment to creating a more inclusive community that celebrates the unique strengths and contributions of individuals on the autism spectrum. And whereas autism is a developmental condition that affects how people perceive the world and interact with others, while every person with autism is different, all deserve the same opportunities for growth, learning, and connection. Raising awareness is a vital step in reducing stigma, promoting early intervention, and expanding access to services. And whereas McKenna Farms Therapy Services in Paulding County plays a vital role in the lives of children and families impacted by autism, though equine assistance, through equine assistance therapy, occupational therapy, speech therapy, and more, McKenna Farms provides compassionate, individualized care that empowers children with autism to thrive. And whereas we recognize and applaud the efforts of McKenna Farms and their similar organizations for their unwavering dedication of supporting children with autism and their families. By fostering acceptance, building understanding, and encouraging inclusion, we help create a world where every child is seen, heard, and valued. And whereas throughout April and beyond, we encourage all citizens of Hiram to support autism acceptance efforts, engage in meaningful conversations, and help build a community that embraces neurodiversity. Now therefore, I Frank Moran, Mayor of the City of Hiram, Georgia, do hairpipe claim the month of April 2025 is Autism Acceptance Month in the City of Hiram, and ask all citizens of Hiram to support autism acceptance efforts. Thank you. Actually, I have a friend of mine who's a retired policeman down in Coral Gables, and he goes around the country doing conferences on autism, especially to law enforcement agencies. So if they respond to a situation, they can recognize if somebody's just acting out or if it's autism recognizable. He travels around the country. As a matter of fact, I think over in Shambly, the chief over there just had him up there about a month or so ago doing that. It's really good deal. Thank you.
Okay, now, my dick too, Stanley.
Picture time.
This Saturday, McKenna Farms is having their annual Derby Day. Are there still tickets available?
Still a few, yes.
Okay, well, if anybody is interested, please call McKenna Farms. It's a good time. You're welcome.
Bust out your best hat.
Yep.
All right. Michael, you're on. Public Works Monthly Report.
All right, I don't have as much for you this time, but we've still got some good information in here. You can go ahead and slip to the next slide. All right, so that's a big chart, lots to read. I don't expect to read it, and I'm not going to read it for you. I just wanted everyone to see kind of the new things that we're tracking as far as work orders and trash pickup and different things we're doing around the city. And it's coincidence Denise puts together most of these numbers for me for these reports. So you can see there's a lot of different things. Each month, I think we've added more information to what we're tracking. But I guess the highlight of this, we've had 322 total work orders, 96% completion rate, and collected 131 bags of trash in April. Oh, March, sorry. Next slide. Some of the highlights on the projects, kind of going through the list of things that we haven't heard about already. The tennis court and basketball resurfacing actually starts tomorrow with pressure washing. And I have the guys also doing some cleanup work around there so that when it's done, it'll be a very presentable and really nice, especially around the basketball court. So, but that does start tomorrow, probably, estimating the courts may be closed through the weekend, just depends on the progress of the paint curing and all that kind of thing. That needs to happen. The tennis court lighting is still scheduled for June, and by the end of this week, we should have a proposal for resurfacing of Nebo Road. So we can start looking at that and maybe moving forward with that one. So those are the biggest things that came up, I'd say, this week since I put together this report. Any questions on those projects?
Okay, great, thank you, Michael.
I have one more. I'll keep, hang on, one more, sorry. The progress on Homer Leggett Park, the program one progress up there is fully completed. The fencing and the gates are now installed. We have seed and straw and down trying to get it to grow, and then gates locked. And I think some messages are going out that progress is happening and letting the public know what to expect going forward with the restroom innovations and all the equipment that we've ordered. So now we are just trying to get to program two, and then we'll be nearing this project up. And that is it, that's all I have this month for the monthly report.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Now, Mayor and Council are going to recognize our employee of the quarter, Denise Brown. Denise? Come on down. Don't look so excited, Denise. Okay, the supervisors all got together and they nominated employees for employee of the quarter, and Denise was the shining star for all her good efforts and the things that she does for the city in dealing with the public and the citizens of Hiram. Thank you, Denise. All right, picture time.
Congratulations.
This is the inaugural first for this, our first of the year, and the first ever. What better representation that the city has? I don't know of one, Denise is the first smiling face that you see. If you come into the administration side of the office, she helps everybody with everything she's always willing to throw in. And also, I want to thank Carl Black, a couple of representatives here with us, if you want to say a word, you can.
I didn't have anything compared.
All right, but thanks to Carl Black that allowed us to make this actually a very special presentation, and you gave $500. I can see that's not going to fit in a teller machine. Denise, you can't cash that check. It won't fit in the teller machine.
Yes. Come on back up.
They're being shy.
My back, Carl Black. That sounds... You're going taller.
I'm going to get a pair of them myself.
I need one.
I could fall down and kill myself.
I know.
One, two, three.
She's great.
That was a surprise.
There goes the rest of the crowd. The City of Hiram will be holding two separate public hearings. First one, the City of Hiram will hold a public hearing to receive public comment on application 2025-01-Z, City of Hiram, made by Trayton LLC requesting a rezoning of 30.56 acres from the existing R2 suburban residential district, zoning classification to R55 active adult residential district, zoning classification for the development of a 55-plus residential community. I'll now read the procedures to be followed during the public hearing. Anyone in attendance at the public hearing wishing to speak on behalf of or in opposition to zoning applications that are on the agenda must be recognized by raising their hand, and they will be asked to state their name and place of residence, and then to sign his or her name on the sign-in sheet, which is located by the door, which should have already been done. The person recognized to speak will be allowed to speak on any point relevant to the application being considered. Applicants and opponents shall be given a maximum of 15 minutes for each side to present its case. Any groups which are present are encouraged to choose a spokesperson to present their views. I may request representatives of each side to speak for their entire group. If more than one speaker represents a group, the 15 minutes shall be divided among the various speakers. Speakers are encouraged to refrain from presenting information that has previously been stated by others. In no case, however, shall any group be allowed more than the allotted time, no matter how many speakers represent the group unless extended by the city council. A designated staff member will be responsible for keeping time. Proposals for such zoning applications should be presented orally to the city council by the applicant and/or their authorized agent, along with any documentation necessary to demonstrate the justification for such a request. During and following the applicant's presentation, the city council may ask any pertinent questions to the applicant or their representative to aid their understanding of the case. Questions asked by the mayor and council and the responses to such questions shall not be counted as part of the maximum 15-minute presentation time limit. After such presentation and discussion with the applicant, I shall ask, provided there is time remaining, if there's anyone else present wishing to speak in support of the request. At the conclusion of the presentation in favor of the application, I shall ask if there is anyone present in opposition to the granting of such a request. Those appearing in opposition may offer oral evidence or documentation to demonstrate their position. During and following the presentation of those in opposition to the application or proposal, the city council may ask any pertinent questions of the opposition to aid in their understanding of the case. Questions asked by the mayor and council responses to such questions shall not be counted as part of the maximum 15-minute time presentation. No further public input will be allowed without consent of the city council. Each speaker shall speak only on the application before the city council and shall address remarks only to its members. Speakers shall refrain from personal attacks on any other speaker and shall refrain from the discussion of facts or opinions irrelevant to the application. I may limit or refuse a speaker the right to continue if the speaker, after first being cautioned, continues to violate this subsection. At this time, the City of Hiram will hold a public hearing to receive public comment on application 2025-01-Z, City of Hiram, made by Trayton LLC requesting rezoning of 30.56 acres from existing R2 suburban residential zoning to R55 active adult residential district zoning classification for the development of a 55-plus residential community. of a fifty-five plus residential community. Cliff, would you please present the staff recommendations?
Stack, staff recommendation regarding application twenty twenty-five dash one dash Z, there were eleven stipulations from Paulding County and we have, and you see in your docket, there's a, two more added by the City of Hyrum, but I've talked to them and actually I'll address one of them, one of them will be eliminated. Number one, the owner developer shall submit detailed landscaping plans prepared by a registered design professional for entrances, amenities and required buffer areas for review approval by the planning and zoning division during the construction plan review process. Stipulation two, the owner developer agrees the single family detached dwellings and townhomes shall have a minimum of eighteen thousand square feet of heated space. Stipulation three, the owner developer agrees to a maximum of one hundred and fifteen residential houses, housing units, eighty-five single family units and thirty homes as per the submitted rezoning site plan dated twelve six twenty-four. And I was, let me say right there, they, the number of houses of residents have been reduced to ninety-three. Ma'am.
Okay, so in our letter from the attorneys, all those pages, so now it's page fourteen had a hundred and twenty, now there's going to be only a hundred and fifty.
Ninety-three.
Ninety-three, okay. And the same thing with the townhomes and the detached?
Well, they could speak to the, to what's going to be the makeup of the ninety-three. And, and that's because that the development plan was changed and I'm kind of moving ahead. When it was first presented, it was presented with a second exit back on the, the backside of the development and because of citizens' input, they removed that exit, second exit and reduced the number of houses. So, that's what that was.
Thank you.
Number four, the owner developer agrees access to development shall be determined during the plan review process. Number five, the owner developer agrees that the access along State Route five, Highway twenty, State Route, State, Highway two seventy-eight will be coordinated and approved by the Georgia DOT. The owner developer shall be responsible for incorporating, incorporating horizontal traffic calming practices within the development if required by the Paulding County Department of Transportation. All practices shall be approved by the Paulding County DOT and designed in accordance with the Institute of Transportation Engineers Manual for Traffic Calming. Stipulation seven, the owner developer agrees to dedicate sixty feet of right-of-way along their property frontage of Pace Road, thirty feet from the center line. Stipulation eight, the owner developer agrees to dedicate sixty feet of the right-of-way along their property frontage of Old Mill Road, thirty feet from the center line. Stipulation nine, the owner developer agrees to dedicate the right-of-way for the county to realign the southern lane of Old Mill Road. Stipulation ten, the owner developer agrees to con- construct an eight-foot shoulder, four-by-one front, front slope, two-foot bottom ditch and a two-by-one back slope accorded, excuse me, along the property frontage of Pace Mill, Pace Road and Old Mill Road. Stipulation eleven, the owner developer agrees parking for amenities must be off-street. That's based on off-street parking shall be in accordance with chapter twenty-six of the U D O. The two recommendations that you have in front of you came from the City of Hyrum twelve, the owner of developer, the owner developer agrees that all streets, roads, lighting and utilities, utilities except sewer and water shall be the responsibility of and owned by the homeowners association. And I have thirteen where there were three options, but the developer has determined there's one option and it's with the ninety-three units and the one exit.
Okay, any questions? Do we have someone in favor of the?
Well, we have the, we have the, someone to speak on behalf, yes.
That's what I just said. Pay attention.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Kevin Moore and I'm here representing the applicant, Trayton Homes, in this application for rezoning before you tonight. I've not had the pleasure of being before you previously, so I appreciate your time and consideration here tonight. This application, as Mr. McGrady stated, is for thirty and a half acres located off of Jimmy Lee Smith that is proposed for rezoning to the R fifty-five category for a age-restricted senior housing community by Trayton Homes. A little bit about Trayton Homes, if you're not familiar, Trayton Homes is now over fifty years old, is a local home building company that's family-owned, been building houses and communities in Cobb County and Paulding County for that entire time and other counties in metropolitan Atlanta, but a good deal of focus in Cobb and Paulding Counties as well. And they're proposing this development. They've had great success with their age-targeted, age-restricted communities that they have built, they do an excellent job with building homes specifically designed for the needs of seniors looking to live in an independent community such as what is being proposed for you here tonight. A little bit more explanation, certainly had a question from one council member and from Mr. McGrady in terms of his explanation. When we presented the initial plan to the Paulding County Planning Commission for their recommendation to you as city council, that plan did contain, at, at that point it had been revised, a total of a hundred and fifteen homes, eighty-five detached homes and then a total of thirty townhomes that had, there were larger types of townhomes, all with masters, master bedrooms on the main floor. But it also contained an entrance onto Pace Road. This property sits off of, like I said, sits off of Jimmy Lee Smith, but it's surrounded on the backside of the property by Pace Road and Old Mill Road. Those two roads are smaller country roads that have not seen a lot of improvements in a number of years. And we had residents that live off of those roads that spoke in opposition, with their opposition aimed at the traffic situation, the safety, traffic impact and safety on Pace Road and Pace, and Old Mill Road in terms of the condition of those roads, they felt that those roads would not be able to accommodate additional cars and so forth. We took a look at that as well as Trayton Homes and looked at how we might redesign this proposal and we did so in two ways. Number one was to reduce the total number of homes being requested from a hundred and fifteen to ninety-three and now our plan has ninety-three detached homes only. So, this is, does not contain a townhome product from Trayton Homes for this proposal. It's ninety-three homes sitting on individual lots that are detached and it contains a single access point, a single entry onto Jimmy Lee Smith with no access to Pace Mill or Old Mill Road, which addresses from our standpoint, the comments that were received from those residents. In addition, our plan now shows that entire area, along Old Mill and along Pace Road, which is across the entire rear of this property, that would be encapsulated with the undisturbed buffer and landscape buffers as well. That particular area of the property is fairly well-tried, so by leaving it alone, we're able to keep the view shed of the residents that do live there, which is more larger lot residential in nature, so their view shed will remain as part of having the existing trees and tree cover remain along those two street frontages. And we think those types of changes, you know, would really be well-received by those residents and accommodate their concerns and comments, which I'm glad that we could do. This property on your future land use map is seen as a future property for commercial use. I can see why, as a future land use plan, you may not necessarily be looking at individual parcels, you're looking at areas along Jimmy Lee Smith where this property does have some limited frontage on Jimmy Lee Smith. It is commercial along Jimmy Lee Smith there in that location. But this property itself, as it comes off of two seventy-eight, it has, like I said, limited frontage and then it opens up to the back, so it has limited visibility from a commercial or retail type standpoint. Moreover, at least from a personal opinion and from our opinion and looking at this property, it's not well-suited for commercial development because it sits off the highway and because it actually intrudes back into a very large lot type of residential area, meaning the same areas we were just talking about, Pace Road and Old Mill Road. Having a commercial, a larger commercial use there, I think, would be detrimental to their quality of life. If you think about that that would be the rear of a commercial development with, you know, fire lanes, dumpsters and that, and rear deliveries and that type of thing, if this was to be developed according to your future land use plan. It's not zoned that way today, but that's what your future land use plan calls for is commercial development. We don't think that would be appropriate and hopefully you would agree. But that ties in though, because this does come to you and we certainly have to recognize that the Paulding County Planning Commission did recommend denial, but I believe it was based on those two primary reasons. And I don't presume to speak for the Paulding County Planning Commission, but I was there and was able to listen to their comments as they deliberated. And the two primary issues for the planning commission were one, bless you, were one, the access to Old Mill and Pace Road and the residents' concern about additional traffic and cars and so forth on those roads was one of their primary reasons. And the second primary reason is I believe that the planning commission, bless you, wanted to ensure that at least they were looking to your future land use plan as the City of Hyrum and wanted to respect that. And I believe based on their conversations would think that it would be the City of Hyrum's city council that would make future decisions about if there's going to be a change to a land use plan as a result of the zoning, that you as council should make that determination as opposed to them making that recommendation to you. So, that's why I wanted you to understand where that came from, from, from the planning commission, at least from my standpoint. And from our standpoint though and perspective and hopefully for your consideration, actually having this property developed as residential as opposed to commercial is a huge benefit to that community that came and spoke, who definitely said they did not want to see it as commercial. Also, the change to remove the access and reduce the total number of homes was likewise very responsive to that community and the residents that spoke at that meeting as well as responsive to the comments from the Paulding County Planning Commission and their deliberations. This proposal from our standpoint also brings, at this particular location, cannot be better suited for an age-restricted, detached, independent senior community from Trayton Homes. The proximity to retail, commercial shopping, groceries and so forth is right there, so it's ideally suited. No, number two and actually more important is how well-suited and proximate it is to the health facilities, hospital, doctors and medical offices that are there as well. Again, when you're thinking about an age-restricted community such as what is being proposed, those are two very, very important items to consider, not only for you from a land use plans or land use perspective, but also from a future resident perspective. What is it that they will want to see? What do they want to be close to? And they want to be close to that. They don't want to have to drive a very long distance to, for those two primary things, their immediate shopping needs and their immediate medical needs. Little bit about senior communities, I've had the pleasure of being involved in a number of different types of age-restricted or senior types of communities, kind of across the range of the housing options and housing opportunities for seniors. Everything from assisted living to senior apartments to what we are proposing here tonight, which is independent living on homes that would be purchased by seniors. And what I've found in, in looking through this is two very important facts that have come to light to me that kind of help with, hopefully with your consideration of whether this is appropriate for your city here tonight. Number one, by the year twenty thirty, according to the U S Census Bureau, there will be, for the first time in American history, more people over the age of sixty-five than there are under the age of eighteen. Importantly, metro, metropolitan Atlanta is one of the leading metro areas in terms of the aging of our population as that statistic demonstrates. We are getting older as a nation, getting older as a community, getting older as a region. And as we continue to look for housing options in the future, I think it's hopefully for your consideration to make sure that we do provide for those options. In particular, this type of option, it's not for everybody that's fifty-five years of age and older, I'm fifty-four, and I would not, this is not the option I would look for starting next year. And if you may be sixty-five or seventy, it may not be the option you're looking for, but there is a growing number of people and a major portion of people that do look for that option. And mainly they live within five miles of where we're sitting right here tonight. That's who primarily will be purchasing these homes, is people who want to make that change, to move down, to move into a smaller place that they can take care of as opposed to where they live now, but they still want to go to their same doctor, their same barber, their same beautician, they want to go to their same C V S, they want to go to their same pharmacist and so forth, but they want to live in their area and be able to stay in their area. And that's who would be living here and we're seeing that in increasing numbers over and over again. And hopefully that can help a little bit with your consideration as well, given, again, what I pointed out to you earlier about how proximate this is to those retail shopping options and more importantly, to the medical and health facilities which are right there as well. Again, what we are presenting for your consideration is a ninety-three home plan with no access to Pace Road, no access to Old Mill Road and only access to Jimmy Lee Smith. As far as the proposed recommendations and conditions that were outlined by Mr. McGrady, we are in agreement with those conditions and recommendations. Absent one, there is a condition as it relates to improvements that would have to be made to Pace Road and Old Mill Road. And those were improvements of creating a shoulder and slopes and dishes and ditches. From our standpoint, those were put in place or recommended by Paulding County DOT because we were accessing those roads. With this proposal now, we are no longer accessing those roads and for us to then incur cost to improve them when we're not accessing them does not seem frankly like an equitable deal for us. But more importantly, I think, is to create those shoulders and to create that aspect of it, you would wipe out the stands of trees I was just talking about that will keep the nature look and aesthetics of those two roads as they are today, which is what those residents were concerned about. So, absent that one condition, we, we don't think, we think it no longer really applies to what we are proposing since we will no longer be accessing those roads. Absent that, we would be in agreement with those recommendations should the council desire to move forward and approve this application.
Are you okay with twelve and thirteen, the ones that the city added?
Yes, we are in agreement with the ones that the city added, number twelve. Number thirteen, as Mr. McGrady said, is not applicable because we now have the one plan we think is the best plan to go forward with.
The other thing I had was, we're down to ninety-three residential, how many townhouses?
Zero.
Zero, that's good.
So, ninety-three single?
That's it.
Yes, detached homes on lots.
I can scratch all those questions off.
And if you'd like to see that plan, I do have additional copies as well as copies of any of that.
With the limited access you have to two seventy-eight, is that sufficient to make an entrance and exit for your development?
Yes, it's, it's plenty big enough for a residential access, it would be right in, right out, but it'll be plenty wide enough for us to create the deceleration lanes and as well as to create the entrance monument and landscaping that would, you know, highlight that feature. It's not adequate from our standpoint for a commercial access, which has to show a lot more, but it's plenty adequate for our purposes. And there's, you know, either way, you know, coming in and leave and then leaving, there are close by intersections, so it's very easy to get around even with that limited access.
Any other questions? Yeah, I've got a couple. Go ahead, please. One, in the initial application for the drawing that doesn't include the second access point, you're asking for a variance between the houses. Eight feet to five feet, is that still accurate?
That's not, that's no longer applied.
Okay, I'm just saying off the drawing that I had, that's what it was showing.
We're, we're not, we're not proposing that variance in the corner.
Very good.
I think we said that at the planning commission as well to, that we would withdraw that.
Okay, and the other question I got is...
So, thank you for clarifying, I didn't include that.
Kind of helps me out better now, because I know you've only got a hundred and twenty-seven feet across Jimmy Lee Smith Parkway.
Right.
I mean, that's a very limited access, not even acre in the very front.
Right.
So, that creates, you know, how are you going to do commercial behind you?
Can't do it.
I mean, it just doesn't make any sense to me.
Right.
But I do have a question about, we did another R fifty-five that we approved back several months ago and we had them put in an emergency exit that is only accessible by public safety. Is there a possibility of adding a secondary emergency exit or entrance to this drawing? If we have an incident occurs right at the very front of the project, anybody at the back can't get out. And that's one, one of the concerns we had with the other project, which we were able to work through. Is that a possibility?
Yes, it's absolutely feasible for us to, I would propose simply because of the resident concerns... Yes, it's absolutely feasible for us to, I would propose simply because of the resident concerns that that be limited to an emergency access only.
Yeah, exactly, that's what we did with the other...
With the Knox box, and so that emergency vehicles all have access. But it's not what the residents or their guests would use. That could easily be accommodated with this plan.
I would add one caveat to that, that both Pace Road and Old Mill, and all those locations along this property are county-owned. So while they may be agreeable to it, they would still have to get permission from the county to have an entrance. So if he's willing to, that's fine, he would just have to make sure.
Thank you.
They, they just, yeah, not in access for the residents, but just for emergency vehicles.
We would have no issues whatsoever with that and readily agree.
Any other questions?
I'm good.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone here to speak in opposition to this project? I see none. This hearing is closed. At this time, the city of Hiram will hold a public hearing to receive public comment on application two zero two five zero one LUP, city of Hiram, an application for renewal of land use permit for property located at five nine zero Hiram Douglasville Highway. Left would you? Is that the staff recommendations?
Yes, sir. Stack of staff recommendation referencing application twenty twenty-five dash one dash WUP, C O S, C O H. City of Hiram staff recommends approval of the application, of this application by J. Kevin Moore of the law firm of Moore Ingram Johnson and Steel LLC over the half of Jeanette S. McMillan, who is the property owner. It was properly posted and noted, we received no complaints, no concerns or issues in writing or in person.
This is a renewal, correct?
This is a simple renewal, it's a required annual renewal, yes, sir. And this, and you read in there where this renewal cannot be transferred to any other property owner. It's only for this specific property and this specific property owner and this specific business at this specific location.
Okay, we have someone speaking in support of this briefly.
He's back.
Yes. I will focus on the briefly. Yes, Kevin Moore here again, it's coincidence, I've never appeared before you before and had the opportunity to do that, and yet I'm here on two applications tonight. So, yes, I'm here representing Ms. McMillan in this renewal of her land use permit on Hiram Douglasville Highway. She continues to live in the, what is essentially a residential structure, it's been converted to meet commercial codes, but it's essentially a residential structure. The property is zoned for low-rise office, and she would just simply like to continue to reside there. Her business is one, she doesn't have too many customers, it's a pretty low-impact business and continues to be so, but she would still like to continue to live there and be able to see the people that are requesting her services from time to time at this point. And I think, given the surrounding area, in fact, there's not been any complaints and so forth, would support a renewal for your consideration.
Any questions?
No.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Is there anyone here that wishes to speak in opposition to the application? Hearing none, the hearing is closed. Public participation or agenda items, no one has signed up, so we'll move on to no old business, and we'll move on to new business. Discuss the FY twenty-six draft budget, Jody.
Our attorney is impeding my process of progress.
He isn't attorney, though.
I've had the opportunity to speak with a few of you about the coming budget and the process that we're going through. We are still in the process of having a very rough draft at this time, not one that's really ready for public consumption. I should have a more approachable or a better version of the budget for you by the end of next week. What I did want to do is, I'm not giving you the wrong stuff here. You will take one and...
Just one?
Just one. That is the current state as of the day of the July budget that we are currently in. We should be at about eighty-three percent of total budget used, both revenues received and expenditures made. Actually, we are doing very well both in the expenditure side. The revenue side is still getting caught up with lost distribution as well as some of the, I guess, occupational taxes close to being done, right? So we do still have some revenues that will come in before the end of the year. We are looking, of course, at certain increases in overall operations, most of it due to economic impact. Some of it due to the fact that we've grown as much as we did over the past year. Thank you very much for the increased number of officers, public works personnel, and some admin positions. So you'll see that reflected in the budget coming up. But that's the presentation for you for tonight, for the draft budget discussion. I will have a full draft budget ready for you by the end of next week. That by no means means the budget itself is finalized, because we'll still go through the budget meeting process with you. And that's where we'll really refine down what we're putting in.
Thank you, Jody. Discuss the official naming of property located on one two six Harris Drive, Michael.
Okay, yeah, this item is to name the property on Harris Drive where the Veterans Memorial is to Marsha Harris Memorial Park after Hiram's first female mayor.
I think that's a good idea.
We would have the Veterans Memorial at Marsha Harris Park.
Makes sense to me. But yeah, it would be, it would be at the park for sure, like the whole area is the park, the memorial is inside the park, so.
Any questions? Well, Michael, since you're here, discuss the Ben Hill Strickland Memorial Park Phase One.
I do have a presentation for this one, I think.
Need a better AV system.
I would just go with it, but I kind of need the pictures for this one, sorry. Somehow, half of it is on the public hearing slide right there. Do we not have, we not have it?
Yeah, we were just doing that one picture, which is the main concept.
Okay, and that's not even all of it, it has like a draft of it. Okay, how am I going to do this? Do you have copies?
We got them.
Okay.
Page fifty-five.
That's not the right one. We need to hurry lines, let me try to think of how to do this one without the pictures. I don't know if it's possible to talk through it.
Entertain us.
But I will pass this along when I'm done, you can just take turns looking at it, I guess. The main, the main part of the presentation was, it's kind of, it's not a master plan of Ben Hill per se, it's more of a, it's more of like the first part of maintenance and operations. We need to kind of get it up to par and last a few more years until we can really master plan certain areas of it. So everything I was proposing in this is things that we can do in-house, it doesn't require a whole lot of engineering and extra help. But it does require some expense, so there's a few areas in here. Y'all really don't, y'all really don't have it?
What does it look like?
What's that? What does it look like?
You said you don't have it.
What picture is it? Does that tell you the page?
Page fifty-five.
Page fifty-five?
Fifty-five.
Okay, everybody, fifty-five.
That's not the right picture, this is the right picture.
Okay.
This one is.
The person's in color.
Yes. Okay, challenging me the best we can.
This is a test.
Yes, it is. I'm not doing very well at this one. I was preparing for my pictures. Okay, so a lot of, a lot of this, and I can't really flip the page because I have another map in here. The overall concept, you can see the bullet points there, is update, renovate, and rebuild some of the amenities that are there now, not necessarily adding anything, just kind of rebuilding and helping along what's there and has been there. Relocate the border fence, I really, I had a map and more information about that, where I proposed all the fencing going, so that one was an important one that I wanted to show. But I will leave this and we can make copies. Reconfigure and install new features throughout the park. Managing the forest and the wetland areas there to be more friendly to the wildlife habitat, kind of preserve the forest and do lots of landscaping. So that's all really Phase One through this.
Can you repeat what you said about the fence?
This.
It's re, removing the fences there now and relocating it around.
The parameters of the park?
Yes, yes, and I had it, I have it drawn out with locations where it would go and cost, potential cost. And then what I would do with the non-fenced areas as well.
When we discussed this years ago, we, not that it was that long ago, but one of the ideas was to remove the fence and use in-house staff to, so we can cut the cost. Is that still something that we're considering?
It could be considered, yeah. I do have a cost to remove it, and also that's a lot of steel that we probably could sell off as well and recoup some money. There, it's a lot, it's twenty-three, over twenty, it's two thousand two hundred and forty-five feet of fencing, and that's not including the gates, the old gates that go with it, so that's a lot.
And is there a plan to protect those access points where cars can pull in?
As far as, new gates?
Sorry, but, yeah.
We could always add new gates, yes.
Page fifty-eight.
Yeah.
Page fifty-eight.
All right. I'm going to skip over a couple, a couple pages. Can I walk up and just show this map real quick?
Yeah, awesome.
Just real quick, the yellow, you know, my callout section real quick, if there's a relocation, parking, etc.
Plantings, it's got a fence, plantings to separate from the road.
I have that, I have that.
Yeah, you all have that.
I have that.
Now we do. What's the guy that's covered?
I thought you only had the one page, I'm sorry. All right, well, let's get, let's go to that page then. Bill Hill, Bill, Ben Hill Strickland Park Phase One A fencing and conservation areas. So I have potential pricing there of what it costs to remove it and install the fencing. There's been questions about what kind of fence, and that the picture there, if you can tell, would be a representation of what kind of fence that I'm least recommending at the moment. And when we get into it, there may be different decisions made, but roughly four foot high, heavy-duty steel as well, but it looks like typical fencing that you see in a park. And the fencing that you see on the map kind of goes around the pavilion and follows the walking trail. So on the Dallas and Oak Street right there, that entire portion that people see out of their front porches will just be landscaped, streetscape area and forest and not a big fence. But the actual park itself will still be fenced in along that entire back part of the park for safety. But it'll also help us to kind of identify what's maintained, like a typical park with streetscape, and then what are we going to protect more as far as conservation efforts go. And the playground as well, we need to make sure we have the playground area secured also. And that, that's kind of just the orange line in there. You have black and white, you can't really see the colors. Those other squiggly lines, that's all the stormwater runoff that goes through the park, which is what causes a lot of the wetland areas that we need to take care of. So you'll see a fence, an orange-yellow squared fenced-in area on the northwest part of the park. That is the wetland area where all of the stormwater goes, and it accesses that area from many locations. It's not really a safe place to just go running and playing right now. So that would be one of the main areas that we concentrate on, not only to protect it, but build some boardwalks through there and educational signage that we can teach people about native plants, things along those lines, and also give our guys practice when they have time for stormwater management techniques. They can go out there and we can try some things before we take them out to the streets and out to the community. And there's a picture there, it's, you can see where it's flooded. And then another picture down below is just an example of something we can do as an experimental area. I already have a location in the park for something similar to that. But there's lots of things that we can do out there to keep it green and to keep it, to keep it healthy. The next page is forest management. And basically, the main concept of that is that the forest, the areas we have out there right now, there's a lot of pine trees, it's not very healthy, there's not a lot, a lot of habitat for wildlife and insects and things like that for it to be an actual forest. And we have two areas of the park that were designated that we would allow to be nature more than typical landscape. And that's what that is, and these bullet points are explanations of what we want to do and the importance of it. And then going back to the last slide real quick, it is a land-water conservation-funded park. So with that, there's things that we need to do to maintain the conservation areas and to keep it as natural as we can do. And it also limits where we can develop inside the park. I have pictures of fun tractors on here, and the reason I have that, this is actually called a BenTrak. And I've used these in different places before, and it's just a piece of equipment we'd recommend for parks for the reason that they can go through and maintain the property. There's forty different attachments, you can do forty different things with it, but it doesn't tear up like skid steers and larger tractors, it doesn't cause the ruts and destroy all of the land that we have there. It can go over wetland areas, it floats a little bit, and also twists and turns to go along with the terrain and can work on slopes. And it's not, it's not very expensive, it's a very versatile piece of equipment that I would recommend for us to use in the parks, but we can also get attachments, use it on the streets and anywhere else in the city as well for a lot of different purposes. But the main intention to start off with in the budget would be for the park. And of course, we have the restrooms, which is on the agenda again later tonight. Don't need to get into too much detail about them, we talked a lot about restrooms with Homer Leggett Parks, the same situation, the same thing, but we, we think we can go ahead and take care of the restroom sooner than later and go ahead and establish our standard in maintenance that we want in the restrooms all at one time throughout all of the parks instead of waiting. I don't know what page it is, but retaining walls and basketball court, I did want to talk about this one for a minute. We have two areas of retaining walls that need attention at Ben Hill Strickland, the basketball being the most important one. So we are getting resurfacing now, we are doing some landscaping and some other things around the area to spruce it up. But you can tell from the pictures where the retaining wall is collapsing, and there's a sinkhole right beside it as well. And you can see the pictures of the courts and everything too, so it all, it all does kind of affect the drainage. I do have some prices and estimates to fix the, fix the retaining wall. It's going to be needed to maintain the resurfacing and to handle the drainage. And then, and really, we don't want it collapsing any more than that as well. So we need to address the sinkhole and we need to address the retaining wall. There's an area behind the stage with the old amphitheater going down to the pond. It's got a lot of riprap, a lot of mud, a lot of runoff, and a lot of erosion issues right now. Kids are throwing the stones and the riprap at ducks that are out there, or turtles or anything else. So it's kind of a safety issue, but also because, again, it is a stormwater property and the pond is a stormwater collection area that filters back into the creeks and that runoff and all of the erosion sediment and everything off of that wall causes health issues in the pond. And rehabbing that pond is a part of what we need to do with the park as well. And this will just be one step in helping keep the water clean, right? And plus, building a retaining wall there would allow us to expand the walkway to five to six feet. It's ADA accessible for future boardwalks we want to build. It'll just look a lot nicer, and we can put some landscaping on top, and there won't be a lot of erosion and runoff. It'll just make a really nice feature, I think, at the park, we could put a sign on it, we can do something, something cool. But it's definitely something that's needed. And you can see the prices there is the estimates. I think the amphitheater one was the most expensive. I'm not going to do the math right now, but like fifty-four thousand dollars. I'm not gonna do the math right now, but like fifty-four thousand dollars total, it's kind of estimated, to rebuild both walls. And again, that's things, the basketball is something we're gonna have to do anyway. The pond one needs to be done, but it's still more of an ask. At the same time, we can just kill two birds there.
I have an ask.
Yes.
Basketball courts.
Yes.
Is there any plan to have some shade over like, um, something like Lost Mountain?
Yes, so, like, like, kind of like I mentioned, this first part, this phase one part is the maintenance and operations, things that we need to keep it lasting for a few years. There's still a lot of good life there, we just need to kind of get it back into, um, I was gonna say at working condition, I guess.
I understand, take care of what you need addressed.
It's nice, but future master planning, say with Gray's Mill, we can include Ben Hill as well, and that's when we can add the things that require engineering and architects and big money, um, to be able to do those. And so, and we can expand the basketball court, we can do whatever is allowed that the engineers say that we can do. So that's not what this first phase is, but yes, that is definitely needed. Same for tennis, same for, um, pickleball, brand-new playgrounds. All of that's gonna require consultants and help. Not necessarily, you don't want it all done in-house, it won't be what you want either. I can promise you that. As part of the basketball on this next page, after the retaining walls, is, uh, again, a temporary solution, I think, will get us by for a long time. I don't know how, where you are of the basketball courts and the mud and the runoff that's around it. Currently, I have, our public works guys digging it out and putting some black mulch, just that should help with that and complement the new painting and the resurfacing that we're doing. But this is more of an artificial turf drainage system that we can lay across the top that won't require nearly as much maintenance. We just gotta blow it off every now and then. It will soak in the water and send it where we want it to and look really nice and not, not be as muddy or just dirty out there. Cause, um, with the, with the resurfacing and leaving the mud and going back and forth and doing that, it's always gonna be a constant mess. So retaining walls, and, and plus, it's just gonna be comfy to walk on as well. It's gonna look nice. It's currently with the mulch, and already warning the guys of that, as soon as they start playing, it's gonna be an everyday thing. You're gonna blow this mulch right back onto the mulch off the court and stay on it every day. With this, you wouldn't have to do that. And it's not, it's not that bad. This is, um, I think forty-two thousand for installation, bordering and everything. And this is, uh, Forever Lawn is the company, that's their playground version they recommended for our basketball courts. There are several companies that sell that, Forever Lawn. There is one local in Georgia, it might even be a state contract thing. I wish I would've jumped on this one a little bit sooner, but it is what it is. Next page is just a little bit of what we're already doing. This is kind of before and after of what resurfacing could look like. Going back to some of, some of the na- nature areas we were talking about, we have already reached out to some volunteers from University of Georgia, Potter County Parks and Rec. We got some help from some guys at Carter's Mountain State Park. A lot of people are excited about coming together, identifying what wildlife we have, what plants we have, what's invasive, what's not native, and, and putting together volunteer and educational opportunities to remove all those and also to replant, um, native plants and to remove the overgrowth and really help it to grow back into a forested area. And we, so we are, we are, we're already on the ball with that one as far as getting people excited about it and wanting to help out. And the next page will be another presentation later, because I do wanna really get in depth a little bit about what UGA Connect to Protect is. There's a little bit of information there, and that's a, a nice program, and they want, um, to help us out too. And so, like I said, some of our volunteers that we've worked with are putting together some proposals of things that we can do so everybody can see, um, how we can do it as a big community effort to take care of Ben Hill. And also be an example, and one of the only parks in the area that do this. So when Catherine was up here not long ago, mentioned that High Arms already leading some stormwater areas. This will be an example that other parks in other cities hopefully would want to follow too in taking care of certain areas. Cause not, not everybody pays attention to that kind of stuff. So this is the last thing, this is the last thing for today. This is more of a master plan thing, but it would be like an in-between this and a real master plan. There's woods behind the tennis courts, or the playground and the tennis courts going to the other parking lot by the Rosenwall. There's no access from that side of the park to that other side of the park. It's just overgrowth of woods. And I, I like boardwalks, I'm sorry, but really would like to build a boardwalk from one parking lot over toward the amphitheater side with many different areas, like from the amphitheater up on the playground, that you can connect and walk through the woods that would be cleared out and protected. Again, it can be an educational thing and lit up at night so that from ninety-two riding down the road, you can look through the woods and see it lit up, it'll be real nice. Eventually, we'll have a new water fountain with lights, so it can be a really cool experience. But these are pictures of what a boardwalk in that area could look like. It would be really elevated in certain areas and lowered to the ground in certain areas, and also create a little bridge from the amphitheater over to the basketball side, connecting the, connecting, connecting the walkway. So this one is probably around four hundred grand for that one. And then any future boardwalks we build would be smaller going through the forest, because we wanna build nature trails along the wooded, the wooded side from Pavilion Two down to the pond, and also eventually through that wetland area when we get it where it needs to be. So a lot of boardwalks, a lot of nature trails with the playgrounds and the tents, a lot of activity, a lot of nature. I think it's a really cool concept, um, for the park. It already is there, we just gotta kind of bring it back.
Great vision.
And that's, that's it for now for Ben Hill.
Moving on to...
Now, any questions?
I got one question.
Yes.
What is your vision time-wise? How long's to get it from where it is now to some of the...
Time-wise?
Yeah.
Minus the boardwalk? We could probably have everything done. Infrastructure-wise, for, for what's in this proposal, we could have done this year. The forestry and the other parts is multi, it's a multi-year program. As we see the progress, um, and then we kind of work with it, um, throughout the years, however we need to. But that's ongoing of managing the thing. The retaining walls, basketball courts, things like that, we'll just have to fix, and then we have to stay on top of it maintenance-wise so that we don't have to rebuild things again. We'll just have to, like tennis courts, the condition they're in, every two years, three tops, if we really take care of them, we're gonna have to do this job over and over again until we rebuild completely. They're kind of in that condition. The basketball's getting there, cause it's not a hundred percent level right now in certain areas. But it's, it's still a good court. We'd like, I think the, I think Jody and I have talked several times, we'd like to make more courts if we can. If we can fit it in there and have two full courts or whatever we can fit in that area that we're allowed to, like I said, that's where the engineers and everybody really come into play. Cause they have to build all that underwater, stormwater for us, the playgrounds and any new big facilities like that, it's gonna, that's where the underground stormwater and those things have to be built. That's gonna disturb the land, which is another reason why we need to really protect the other areas where we can't build on top of. So all of this, I mean, if we could come, if we can find the money and with grants or whatever it might be, the boardwalk could happen soon too.
What about that parcel of land adjacent to the basketball court? It's like a parking lot, and there's that little land you've pointed out to me before.
The, the other park, the other parking lot?
Yeah, there's a parking lot, paved parking lot, and then I think it was where Dr. Free Paulding used to be or something.
Oh, the, the concrete pad?
That's our...
I, I do believe GDOT's probably going to take that.
Gotcha.
And that a lot of that corner of the park.
Okay.
When you have time to go back and look at that overall map, you'll, you can see the white shaded areas on the right, that's really right now where GDOT's right-of-way is gonna sit. Now, it's unclear what they're going to do. Uh, I do think on the corners of Oak Street and, and, uh, Alexander? Oh, why I get so confused? Yes, they're gonna do, they're gonna do quite a bit of work. Yeah, which is gonna require a lot of construction setbacks and things like that. So there's, there might be some da- some damages and maybe even some parking lot taken away, we don't know yet on that corner.
They're taking it, everything around, yeah.
Oh, no. That's awesome.
Questions?
A lot of excitement contained.
Bid award for the, uh...
Yeah, imagine you want me to stay up here.
Then?
The, the next one is, is it the, the, the restrooms?
Well, we have number twelve, discuss bid award for construction of Pavilion Three at Ben Hill Strickland Park.
Okay, Pavilion Three.
What about eleven?
I thought he, he covered the restrooms, didn't he?
Word, this is Homer Leggett.
Oh, we didn't, we didn't cover the bid award.
Well, you didn't do Homer Leggett.
Homer Leggett and Ben Hill.
So we got Ben Hill, but he didn't say anything about Homer Leggett.
Yeah, so this was a, this is a bid, a bid award we put out to bid, um, to renovate all three restrooms. The one at Homer Leggett and the two at Ben Hill. They're separated in there by quotes and prices, but it's as one project, uh, we, we put it out to bid. And... The, uh, let me find my place here. Okay. So with the total cost of one hundred eighty-one thousand eight hundred and eighty-seven dollars, which is, is exactly in line almost where with all these proposals where the budget should've been if you added all three restrooms together, um, awarded to contractors of West Georgia as the lowest bidder and most responsive as being most familiar with our facilities. Uh, they were the lowest bidder as well. So we would like to award the restroom improvements at Homer Leggett Memorial Park and Ben Hill Strickland Park in the amount of one hundred eighty-one thousand eight hundred and eighty-seven dollars with a contingency of eighteen thousand one hundred eighty-eight dollars and seventy cents awarded to contractors of West Georgia. And at Homer Leggett, that includes drainage on the outside, the drinking fountains and all the concrete pads that was proposed as well. Any questions? Pavilion Three?
Yeah.
All right, so we, we put Pavilion Three, um, the construction for that out to bid as well. I know it went out to bid a few years ago, and it, it's kind of lapped, so we put it back out to bid. There's questions about the pad that's out there, code requirements and things like that. So we had three bids, we would like to work with Riley Contracting LLC, they were the middle bid. All right? But they were very responsive in trying to come up with a solution for the code requirements. If awarded the job, we'll also get an engineer to draw up full, uh, plans for the footings, the structure, how everything's connected, and, and it's a plan that we can use to rebuild Pavilion Two one day or even to use in other parks around the city. It will, we'll own the plan and have everything already kind of approved, um, through our building inspector and everything, or at least a plan that he's approved in the past. Right now, there are questions about the pad that's there and what's gonna be required. So their bid was sixty-eight thousand. Uh, we went, we had to go back with an addendum, uh, with some requirements. So they came back with eighty-five hundred dollars for the engineer and fifty-seven hundred dollars and a little bit more cost. So that cost is eighty-two thousand two hundred dollars, and I'm asking for more than ten percent contingency for this one, seventeen thousand eight hundred dollars, because we don't know what's gonna be required yet for the code. That could change, and it's gonna be a lot of conversations between us, the contractor, and the building inspector on what will be approved and what's appropriate, what's the most safe. So again, Riley Contracting, they, they were the most responsive and communicative with everything that we asked, uh, give us everything that we needed, and I think they're ready, ready to go. And again, they were not the lowest bidder, they were the second, but definitely in the middle, um, of the, of the bids that we received. And it should be only take a week to build, they said, probably a week, once everything is, is good to go and, and construction can start. And if I'm, I think Jeanette, Jeanette's here right now, we have, cause the pavilion itself, we probably, we could've kept it busy all some, this far and probably all summer if we had had it. So there is a demand for the pavilion rentals. And the third one will be nice, one on that side of the park. And it would also go in the pad that's been sitting there for a couple of years now. Any questions?
Thirteen, discuss the surplus of pews and folding chairs at the seventy-six C board street building.
Yeah, and seventy-six C board, there are, there's still a lot of furniture. There is twenty-two eleven-foot pews and eighty-four folding wooden chairs, uh, we'd like to surplus and auction off. We had success with GovDills, uh, auctioning off the dump truck and the old police cruiser. So we'd like to give it another shot and try to sell the furniture, uh, as well. I think that could probably bring in some good revenue from what I've researched on GovDills and church pews and, and things like that, so.
Jody, would, if we did that and we got the eleven thousand, could it be put towards some of the expense for the parks?
It would be received, uh, as general fund revenue, uh, Jackie, who's, she's going. Well, anyway, it would be received as general fund re- revenue to be reallocated as needed by the council.
Okay, cause I'd like to see it go towards the park.
Discuss the request for approv- approval, uh, increased cost associated with the equipment at Homer Leggett Memorial Park.
Is this Michael's meeting?
The first half is, you got Chief next. The, um, yeah, so it's, so we've already, we already approved the purchase, uh, of all the equipment at the dog park. And then when everything went through and to get the final approval from Sourcewell, which is the state contract, they came back and said they don't give us discounts for the surfacing that we want to use underneath the, the fitness equipment. So therefore, they had to take away a portion, um, the new discount they would off, offer us, it's in here somewhere, eight thou- eight thousand one hundred and thirty-one dollars. So it increased the price nine thousand one hundred ninety-five dollars and fifty-five cents. So we're coming back to ask for, uh, the additional money, uh, pre to the PO and then purchase the equipment.
And Jody, there is that extra amount in recreational, there is that extra amount in recreational splosh to cover it, okay?
Is that it, Michael?
That's all I got.
I take the rest of the night off.
You're amazing.
Discuss change orders for Duncan Circle Improvement Project, Mike, uh, Jody?
Duncan Circle has been completed, um, if you've had a chance to go over into the industrial park, it is a much improved visual coming in off of Powder Spring Street to Duncan Circle back around over to the, um, gateway, the Boulevard Inn. Uh, however, in the process, like we find with a lot of old infrastructure, when we got to the stormwater aspect, um, we found additional deficiencies in the catch basin is one of them. They, they were listed, uh, to remove and replace curb and gutter that was out of line with the existing curb and gutter because it had sunk over time, so it had to be replaced. Then you had to patch cracks and grout, which is where I'm talking about with the inlet structure right at Duncan Circle and I believe Pogue Crossing, where they had to lift the cap off of the, the storm catch basin. No way to see down in there for the contractor to know that was there until we had that top off. And then the, um, to construct a thirty-foot con- concrete flume because we were experiencing a lot of flooding coming down off the hill from the railroad and the properties that are higher up on the backside of the industrial park, and it was flooding that area where Powder Spring Streets intersects Duncan Circle. And we needed the flume in order to conduct that water into the channel it needed to go. So, um, at the time, this was gonna hold up the process of getting this done. I gave the authori- uh, the authorization for it to go forward, so this is a bit of housekeeping coming back to you, just making sure that, you know, we covered it with you. Uh, but the, uh, the additional cost was, i- if we had done the ten percent contingency on this as we normally do, we would've not needed to come before you because it came in under that amount. But as it stands, we didn't do the ten percent in the amount, instead of twenty-five thousand, ended up being about seventeen thousand two hundred and forty-eight dollars. So they did a good job for us overall.
Questions? All right, Chief, showtime. Discuss the purchase of five Panasonic tablets and keyboards for installation in our new police vehicles.
Well, the second Michael of the night. So, um, as we're outfitting the five patrol cars that you authorized in October, we're down to the point of needing to put in, um, our electronics, which will include the Panasonic tablets and keyboards. Unfortunately, as you can see, these are not, these are not cheap pieces of equipment. They're about three thousand dollars for the laptop and another five hundred for the keyboard because they are military-grade spec. They've gotta be out in the sunshine and the cold, and they'll run forever. The good part about this is that we're purchasing them directly from a state contract vendor, which we found. The Georgia state contract vendor is in Florida, which doesn't make any sense, but they are. But by doing it this way, we're saving the city about twelve to fifteen percent, because if we allowed the vendor to purchase them, we would get upcharged that twelve to fifteen percent for these, um, individual pieces of equipment, and we've been able to get them from our state contract vendor within five days. What we're doing is we're gonna be using salary savings out of the... What we're doing is we're going to be using salary savings out of the police salary and do a budget amendment at the end of the year to move that into small equipment to pay for these and not finance them. Again, I'm trying to cut our costs on equipment by not financing and finding the best deals we have available. So we will come back next week to talk about the vote and the final costs.
Discuss creation of a city marshal's office under the Hiram Police Department to assume the duties of code enforcement.
This is an organizational change that we have looked at over the past year. One of the issues that we have been running into more and more is that as our code enforcement officer encounters events where citations and other things need to be issued, he doesn't have the legal authority to issue those citations without having to call a unit in off the street. We have a very capable, very competent code enforcement officer. He's doing an incredible job for us. What we're trying to do now is get him into a position so, and get that position to a place where that they can be self-sufficient without having to call a marked unit every time they'll need to issue a citation or a summons for a person. We've checked with our incumbents. He is ready, willing and able to go to the police academy to get his state certification. It will help us in the long run. And this is actually just an organizational change. The position is already there. It would just require two things, a movement of that person under a new office. We do not want to, we do not want another division. So it'll be an office, under the chief's office, where the chief will be the city marshal and then the persons, the person now and then eventually as the city grows, as that office grows out, the other people in that office will be deputy marshals empowered to enforce code enforcement and state law at the same time.
Questions? Discuss the false alarm section ordinance.
On our first trial of the false alarm ordinance, the judge had some concerns about section twenty-two, one fifty-six subsection C, where there was a, a thought on the judge's part that the way that this section was worded required us to issue a summons after the third false alarm, which in this case, there were six. And they were so close together, we did not issue the, on the third because by the time we were ready to issue the summons, a fourth came in, then a fifth, then a sixth. So we issued it after the third. What we're doing now is cleaning up the language in that ordinance that says it may be issued anytime after the third, so that it clarifies that we're not required to go out and issue a summons after the third citation because we do have businesses and homeowners that are into multiple-digit false alarms already this year. And at the moment, we have suspended any application of the false alarm ordinance, pending any, pending this change to the ordinance, to make sure that it meets with the judicial approve, approval.
I'll just jump to number twenty.
I have a question just about the ordinance, the summons. Is it the same for like residents and businesses, are the fines the same?
At the moment, yes. And the reason being is because we're not in charge of the fire department. And I'll give you an example, and, and very quickly, and when I was public safety director in Henry County, if I had to roll a battalion, which is a truck, EMTs and a battalion commander, you were fined three to six hundred dollars, and then it doubled every time because that was our cost. Here, you're just, because of a resident, and there's no appreciable difference between the two of them, it's a twenty-five, and then it doubles as we continue to have more and more false alarms. I'm sorry, your, your honor, you said number twenty?
Just go over number twenty, discuss purchase of five M five hundred in-car video camera systems.
Okay, same as with, as we found with the in-car tablets or computers. It is cheaper for us to go out and purchase the in-car video systems, as you can see from the cost. For five of these, it's around sixty-five thousand seven hundred and twenty dollars. There's nothing cheap for these, but as you have realized over the past month and a half, video is an incredibly important thing in our job. It protects the city, it protects the officers, it protects the community in the event that one of our officers does something they should not have done. So, in this case, we need to purchase five more video cameras for those vehicles. Again, that's all we're waiting on is the installation of the cameras with the body camera connectors, which I already have in my office for those cameras, and then the tablets and those vehicles will be ready to come to Hiram and be put into service.
Let's go through this, we'll come back to you, Jody, on the other, on the ordinance. Any questions on this? Twenty-one, may I have a motion on item number twenty-one?
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of five M five hundred in-car video camera systems with body camera mounts and video storage in an amount not to exceed sixty-five thousand seven hundred and twenty dollars to be funded by a budget amendment from police salaries.
Discussion, all in favor? Opposed? Okay, motion passes. Discuss amending the previous approval granted for purchase of a Ford Maverick, including the upfitting and financial, and financing through GMA's Magnolia Bank for the police department, Chief.
This is a technical correction to, for the purchase of the Maverick. As you remember, we have brought this to the council, you approved purchase of the Maverick. The one thing that we did not include in the language as we did at that time when we said not to exceed the forty-one thousand dollars is because of our auditor's requirements, we need to include and amend this to include the financing fee through Magnolia Bank from GMA for four points-
Three.
Three? I can't read that.
Four point seven nine.
Four point seven nine percent interest for the purchase of the vehicle. And with this vote, we'll be able to pick the vehicle up tomorrow and be able to get the vehicle into service.
Questions? May I have a motion on item number twenty-three?
I'll make a motion to amend the previous amount approved for the purchases and uplifting of the Ford Maverick from forty thousand to forty-one thousand three dollars, zero cents, plus four point seven nine interest to be funded by the police plus.
I'll second.
The question, the cost of the vehicle went up a thousand?
No, the actual cost of the vehicle is forty thousand, and then there's administrative fee of, I think it's almost a thousand dollars.
Okay.
Any other questions? All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Jody, discuss the adoption of a new ordinance regarding the sale of small, narrow city-owned property.
I'll take that.
I'll take that for Jody. Alright, council members, normally when a city is selling a parcel of land, like a regularly-sized piece of land, you know, square, city block, several acres, state law requires that that be either auctioned at a public auction or that the city received sealed bids and it gets sold to the highest bidder. One of the unique things about government work is that occasionally, the city will own a piece of property that we just have a random strip. We have an irregularly-shaped piece of land that nobody would be interested in except the people that live next door to it. Or it may be, you know, small triangle, there's, there's a wide variety of things. Under state law, there is an exception to the highest bidder at public auction or highest sealed bids when you're dealing with an irregularly-shaped, narrow or small piece of property such that if you were to convey it out, the general public's just not going to be interested in it because it doesn't have a lot of value. Some people on the other hand might be interested in it because they could take advantage of whoever their neighbor is because they want to make, they want to impede access or something like that. This is a proposed ordinance that says when we have an irregularly-shaped piece of property or a small and narrow one, that really has no independent use or value to anybody, to, to the general public, that the city council, upon the city manager's recommendation, can allow this piece to go through a special ordinance procedure. If the city manager recommends that you use this procedure and the piece of property qualifies, and y'all greenlight going through this procedure, what would happen is if we have a small piece or irregularly-shaped piece, what we'll do is we'll send out a notice to the adjoining property owners. And that notice will say, the city is interested in selling this. You're invited to make a, submit a bid. You have thirty days to submit a bid. After those thirty days are up, city manager will open up the responsive bids, see who the highest bidder is and potentially award it to that highest bidder. The city also has the option to reject all bids. The city also has the option to take the highest bid and further negotiate for a higher price. But it, the bottom line is, this process exists for both cities and counties to get rid of random pieces of land that nobody would otherwise be interested in except for the people that perhaps live next door. And if you adopt this, that will be the procedure that y'all use for these types of properties. Be glad to answer any questions.
Do we have to include the dimensions, like what is considered small?
Yeah, that's a great question. We do not have to include dimensions, but let me just read-
Well, I'm sorry, size.
What, what state law says and how this is actually interpreted is an unresolved question. Narrow strips of land so shaped or so small as to be incapable of being used independently as zoned or under applicable subdivision or other developmental ordinances, or as streets. So whatever that is, I, I've seen this used before. The county had a piece of land, they built a, they built a, built a reservoir and across the street, there was a hundred and, I don't know, hundred and ten, hundred and forty-four square foot triangle that the county owned and had no use for it, so they sold it to the man who lived across the street, who lived next door to it, and I think he probably bought it for twenty dollars. But that's, there's not a restriction, but it's got to meet that standard where it's not going to have a real capable use under zoning and development regulations.
Thank you.
You have the questions? Okay. Melissa, we've reviewed the eject, concept agenda.
Should we? Yes. Alrighty. The, both of the zoning applications would be new business because they're zoning cases. Number eight, no action. Number nine, new business, that's the name of the property. And I don't, I know there wasn't any opposition, but I was thinking it, a more formal vote, perhaps if her family came to the meeting, would be a little bit more impactful. Number ten, which is the phase one concept for Ben Hill Strickland, consent. The restroom improvements, bid award, consent. The bid award for Pavilion three, consent. The surplus of the pews and the chairs, consent. The increased costs for Homer Leggett equipment, consent. The change orders for Duncan Circle, consent. The purchase of the tablets, I put as new business because Chief was saying the final prices and such would be available next week.
They're, I'm sorry, they're in their packets now.
Oh, okay, I thought you said that something else you were waiting on. Oh, okay, so then I would change that to consent. The creation of the marshal's office, consent. The amendment to the false alarm ordinance, consent. The new ordinance regarding the sale of small or narrow city-owned property, consent. The in-car videos, that's no action because you already voted. And then, of course, the vote, no action. The approval of the grant, I mean, the, sorry, the increase for the Ford Maverick, neither one of those, any action because you already took the action. And that's what I got.
Mr. Griffin, you got anything for us tonight? Wow, okay.
Well, thanks for staying.
May the sixth, at six PM, there will be the regular session here in the municipal annex. May twenty-four, budget meeting at nine AM in the municipal annex. May twenty-six, city halls closed for Memorial Day. May twenty-seventh, at six PM, be the work session here in the municipal annex. And happy Mother's Day to all you mothers out there.
To you.
I am a big mother. I just called that a lot. Congratulations to all upcoming graduates. Chief, do you have something, since you're standing there with your face hanging out?
The CSX Railroad had a grant opportunity available that we've already applied for. I apologize, not asking permission upfront. But in that grant opportunity, we could request train cars. So we have requested two dining cars and a caboose. They have sent us back an email that they have received it, and they are considering the donation. So we will just have to wait and see if CSX will come across with train cars for the city of Hiram to be used as we see fit.
It would be nice to have a dining car. It really would.
Melissa, you got anything?
I want to highlight Denise again. Really think the, the city's done that program and there is definitely, like Jody said, to be inaugural employee of the quarter, it would have been better, and it was unanimous as well.
Jody, you got anything?
No, sir, she told my hundred.
She should. Bob?
I'm good, nothing.
Doris?
Nope.
Melissa?
I got it, but I'll be quick. Um, so, let me just pull up something, I'm sorry. Just wanted to make sure I don't miss anything. This Thursday is the county's Greystone Luncheon hosted by Paulding County's Chamber of Commerce. It will be featuring, we have a special speaker, Mr. Smith, the COO of Georgia Department of Economic Development. Next Wednesday is the Paulding County Chamber of Commerce, is the annual golf classic presented by BLD Roll Off Containers. And I will update you on the sixth with some others. There is a town hall meeting coming up. Our Commissioner, Virginia Galloway, is hosting a town hall meeting for post three, which is our region, our area. And she will be, this will also be hosted by or orchestrated with the efforts of our new sheriff, Mr. Henson, and with, what is that? I'm sorry, I didn't finish. And Kimberly New, one of our elected officials, and that is on Thursday the eighth, at, Thursday the eighth.
At six.
Six o'clock.
At six PM, I'm sorry.
Greystone.
Greystone.
I'm sorry, added that too. Oh, and then there's another town hall meeting from another elected official's post two, Ms. Honorable Sandy Kaker, and that's at Mulberry Rock at six PM. And that is about the-
With where?
That is, I thought, I'm sorry. May twelfth, and that's for the possibility of a land swap. Some good information, Sandy Kaker will be able to deliver accurate information about the Mulberry Rock, over fifty acres, for a swap with Irma Matthews, which is the first black school in Paulding County, and she'll be able to answer all of your questions.
Eric?
Yes, thank you.
This is sarcastic.
You said-
This is sarcastic.
Wow. Yeah. Melissa, you like ignited a new fan.
Well, while you're in the talking mood, Derek, can I have a motion on item number-
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, if I may, just one, one reminder. On those town hall meetings, just since presumably city business will be related to what those are. since presumably city business will be related to what those are, maybe not in the Commissioner Caker one, but certainly in the Commissioner Galloway one, just a reminder, don't let a quorum attend because otherwise it will be an open meeting on the part of the city. So, just keep that in mind.
Motion on item number twenty-four.
I will second.
All in favor? Right.
You made Tony sing.
Oh, that's right, J.
You were supposed to sing his items.
Yes.
He's going to sing the false alarm ordinance.
Oh, there you go.
That'll be the first reading, it'll be a first singing.